I want to welcome you to our first meeting ever here at the new 10 North Street, Main Street building for our Akron Public Schools regular meeting. And we're just grateful to be in these new, this new facility and to of course have all of you present with us this evening. At this time, roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mrs. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Mrs. Lasher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
And our student board representative from STEM High School Addison Johnson. Thank you.
And at this time will be led in our pledge of allegiance by Addison Johnson.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
Before we begin with our community and school reflections, we want to acknowledge the presence of a longtime former school board member and councilwoman at large Linda We also want to acknowledge today a great honor for Akron Public Schools and for the board to announce at this time that on March the 31st, 2019, our superintendent was bestowed the Doctor of Education from the University of Phoenix, given to David William James. His dissertation dealt with the influence of leadership behavior on organizations. So we are so proud of our leader, our superintendent. He's been honored by his peers. He's been honored by other organizations within the city. But to be an example to our students and to the board to continue his education into a higher level, we applaud that and we thank you and we know your family is proud of you and I know Akron Public Schools Board is proud of you. At this time, are there any community or school reflections? Yes.
No community or school reflections tonight, but just wanted to let everyone know as we go through the meeting tonight, I do have another commitment at Cuyahoga Falls City Council and will be leaving early, so just didn't want anyone to think that I was just getting up and walking out, so.
Yes, Mr.?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I have a couple of things. I attended the early college graduation and it was a nice ceremony. One of the things that was really nice and I really enjoyed about that is seeing the kids come there. But they received their diploma and there were about 89, correct me if I'm wrong, someone, about 89 kids who graduated. I think all but four are receiving their bachelor's and associate's degree from University of Akron. So that was very, very neat and very nice that they were able to receive that. I also attended the George C. Miller Scholarship Luncheon and that luncheon also had about seven kids who received scholarships. Out of the seven, six were Akron Public Schools students who received it. So it makes me feel good that our students are out there achieving in education and being able to receive scholarships such as that. And then, this is a program that I really, really love. It's probably one of my favorite times of the year because you have graduation, but the other is the Teacher of the Year. And we all attended the Teacher of the Year banquet and that Teacher of the Year banquet was really, really nice. Congratulations to all the award-winning teachers and the Teacher of the Year, Joseph Nicolino, who won Teacher of the Year. But we need to celebrate our teachers every day and all day because if it weren't for teachers and educators, where would we even be at this point right now? So wanted to thank them. Thank you.
What else?
I'll go next briefly. I was really sad to miss the LeBron James announcement, but I was at a really exciting announcement of its own and that's the agricultural plan that is going to be happening in the city and the kickoff was actually the same day, right around the same time. So the G R Foundation and Knight Foundation each put in $100,000 to help the city really plan for what arts and culture could... of the plan is to be really inclusive in how we... Been a handful meeting so far. I know Ms. Juick was one of them, but it feels like an important time for APS to also be part of that conversation so we can build a pipeline as well of what it means to really have arts and culture excellence in the community.
If I can add to that really quickly, we will have some board representation. I did agree to sit on the screen.
An agricultural plan, cultural.com is the place where we can all be part of the conversations, the events, there's tons of public... But also very important that the schools have a voice in that. And I know we have so many events happening this month. Just wanted to say thank you to all of the staff and the administrators and teachers and members and our partners who are helping make that possible. So thank you all.
Anyone else?
Um, Mr. Addison.
Yes.
I was just...
We were just gonna, doesn't matter, but either you or Tim can go and then I'll have something to say about Addison before he speaks.
Well, okay. I'm not going to talk about the LeBron thing. Somebody else can talk about it. But I had the opportunity this past weekend to do the Hope Walk for Stewart's Carrying Place. It was just, I mean, the energy and the camaraderie of people who have either lost loved ones to cancer or are in company and taking care of loved ones that currently have the... just honoring and hope of people who have suffered and recovered from it. There was various different people walking for different reasons and it was very encouraging because a lot of family members, a lot of us have family members who have suffered from the disease or maybe even passed away. I know I personally did. So it was just a wonderful time to be able to share in that. I also had the opportunity to go to Boctle High School where also Representative Omobian had attended where Spike Lee's wife spoke about, she spoke to the infant mortality issues and things of that nature. A lot of information that has happened that she has been experienced in her walk of life with females who were expecting and some of the mortality that took place during her journeys thus far. So we also had Representative Amelia Sykes, she spoke and as you know, she's on the infant Introduced it. She's a big component, a proponent of infant mortality. So she spoke and... But it was, it was a really, really, really energized event at Boctle High School. They served lunch. There were different tables set up for different things that are going on in the city, different organizations that are trying to address that particular issue in our community. I think, oh, that same day, I had a real full day that day. I went to, this was the most fun though. I went to Canal Park and I saw Firestone versus North, baseball, you guys, baseball. And then after they played, then Boctle faced East and Boctle, I was just, wow. I was so excited. I had no idea those young people had such talent. And it was just a real nice time to just decompress and enjoy some of our kids doing some things. I don't know what else I did, so, but that's all I can remember right now, so.
If we all went to completely different events, we still would never hit everything on our calendars right now. So just to cover a few highlights, I did get to participate with the SUMA CLI through Leadership Akron. I got to help introduce them to the I Promise School. One of the things that gets focused on the most with I Promise is all the things that are fabulous and wonderful and things we couldn't do without the foundation, but I got to focus on the things that are the same, that we do in every Akron Public School. Lunch, breakfast, Wonder World, counseling services throughout and trying to, as we're spreading those wraparound services through the district and got to point those things out. Big shout out to Keith Litke and to Brandy Davis and for all of that staff for always being ready to share the story. I was there again with, we had the Northeast Region of the Ohio School Board Association come and we got to ask, answer a lot of questions and show them around the school. And again, they're always troopers, always there, always ready to help share that story. And again, pointing out what we're learning there, we're taking out and we're using other places. A few other highlights, the Akron Urban League Luncheon, Scholarship Luncheon was fantastic. Dozens of our students receiving scholarships, some of them full rides to Kent State and Ohio State Universities. Also attended the Firestone High School Choir Concert, the last one as a parent, so I'm not telling you how many tissues I went through, but it was a beautiful concert and a wonderful night. I think we packed the place to the rafters. I know there was one... Here was wonderful also and I'm sure somebody else was at something else. Oh, the I Promise. Why am I getting the I Promise? Well, we definitely want to give huge thanks not only to the foundation, but to the Dicks Foundation for the donation for the I Promise gym. That was one thing, I am going dancing with Mrs. Baylor. I have decided because she had no qualms about getting out there, so that is, that's going on our calendar.
We have videos, so.
Yeah, there's video.
Who was the, the woman that did the hype?
She's a coach.
She's a coach. She does their meditation, their physical activity.
Nothing peaceful or mindful of that. It was excellent. And then I ran into her at lunch, out for lunch with her family and I was like, man.
Those BAP folks got to meet her as well, so they were a little...
Did a great job.
I could go on all day.
Hit two highlights that I had over the last couple of weeks. Mr. Bravo and myself had lunch at Kenmore Garfield for their Cinco de Mayo as a fundraiser for one of the students. And according to our Teacher of the Year, I'm sorry, two fundraisers.
Two students.
Two students, okay. Two fundraisers then. But there was a, one of the student's father was the chef for the day, guest chef for the day. Delicious, the tacos were awesome, carne asada was a close second place. I didn't have the other, didn't get to taste the other two things, items on the menu, but my understanding is they did raise the funds they were looking for. Our Teacher of the Year is a teacher at Kenmore Garfield and I was talking to him before the Teacher of the Year. That was, that was very nice. And then I got to attend the LeBron James Family Foundation Town Hall for Boctle High School. And it's the first time I had had the opportunity to go into their facility in Infestation Stadium and got, and Michelle Campbell took me, gave me a little tour of what is going to be. It's not all built out yet, but that's an awesome facility that they're putting together to help the I Promise students when they get on the University of Akron campus. But great facility.
Okay. And now Addison. And Addison has a great support group around him, not only the persons in STEM High School, but he has his mom and dad who are educators and sister, family members who are smiling. So take a deep breath and you can give us your wonderful report that you have for us.
At the National Inventors Hall of Fame, STEM High School. Proud to say that my father Larry Johnson Jr. High School, we have a special language. National Inventors Hall of Fame, STEM High School is national, is a national... reported the U.S. News Report. National App Challenge is the most prestigious. STEM High School won the Representative Tim Ryan Ohio 13 Challenge. Director of the team is Coach Sam Appleby. Coach Appleby is one of my favorite coaches. All values added measures. STEM High School is a momentum... All Akron Student Engineering Program. High School's chess team won second in the state. Chess team coach, Mr. Donna Glokar. Skills USA Ohio State Championship brings over 5,000 competitors. A 16th career technical education in Ohio. STEM High School competed in Columbus and won the silver second place award in mobile robotics and they took third place bronze in related technical math. Coaches for the team are Kaden Zlinski and Sam Appleby. I play the position point guard for Firestone CLC. At STEM High School, we have a special design schedule that allows athletes to play at their home schools. Schedule is to, is designed to allow the students, student athletes to arrive on time to practice and not miss any educational time. Schedule also allows students to take classes at STEM and the University of Akron. Day 15th, 100% of STEM High School seniors will graduate and they have earned over $1
Want to thank our representative from our schools and I happen to be his liaison person, so we're just grateful you did a great job. Thank you so very much. We are in the learning process. This is the first meeting we have in the building, so I noticed there's some things we need to shift around so that everybody can hear the excellent reports not only our regular adult school board members make, but our students make as well. So thank you so very much and be patient with us as we're finding our way to make sure that we get everything done in decency and in order. So thank you very much. At this time, I don't believe we have any requests to address the board. Our community recognitions, communications and recognitions at this time. And Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones. Yeah, sure. Yeah, use your principal voice.
We have quite a few kids here, but again, I went to a meeting last week, step program, which we have four kids inducted, so I'm gonna throw, throw that out there so they can get scholarships given to them. But while I was there, one of the students said, who had just graduated from there, can you hear me? I can talk louder than that if you need me to. I'm the shortest guy in my family. That's fine, if you want me to, that's fine. So one of the things she said is, who would've thought? She talked about who would've thought that someone from herself, from her community would end up doing so many wonderful things? And the same thing with our chess team. Who would've thought that the first day of chess practice this year, we would have 57 students show up? And we were... We were certainly surprised as we had students playing on the floor, playing in every spot. We were looking for other rooms for them to play. Now, we brought part of Akron Early College here today because last year, those students sitting in the back at Akron Early College, they still play with us every Thursday. They stop in and they continue to play. They were first in the state last year and they moved on. However, this year's team, as we're celebrating, we're second in the state. They're gonna go for first next year again, but they were second in the state, so you have the state champions from two years ago and second place this year. They also participated in the Canton Scholastic League and they were champions in the Canton Scholastic League, which trophy's there, which is the traveling trophy and that's with many teams. So they end up playing the teams from Solon, from other parts of Cleveland, I think last year when we were in Columbus, Columbus Academy, different schools there. And again, who would've thought that a team from North Hill, team of these wonderful students doing so many wonderful things, would end up in first and second place in the state and in every single Canton tournament. Canton has four tournaments during the year. They finished first as a team in the first tournament, first in the second, first in the third, and first in the fourth. So every single tournament. So again, but we couldn't do this without you, so I would like to give credit to our coaches back there, Coach Cook, Coach Hulko.
They would stand. Coaches would stand, thank you.
And we also like to thank you because without you, we couldn't have done this, without Ron Linger who allowed us to have transportation to these many tournaments, including in Columbus for the state championship last year and the teachers who helped support each one of these students as they sponsored each one of them. And one last thing, Mrs. Cook and the effort she puts in, as in the sense of she makes lunch and food for the kids for the night before, she made so much for them that she actually ended up passing out food to other teams at the state tournament this year because she's a big, big cooler of food. In fact, she gave me one of the lunches and I asked her who'd she feed? It was just, I know, so much, so much in there. She takes time and she spends her own money to make sure that they have food. Teachers help sponsor them so that they have food because giving up their Saturday and with state tournament, Saturday and Sunday. So again, we'd like to thank you for helping provide that transportation. We'd like to thank the students for the hard work they put in every single week. And in fact, don't let me fool you, every single week, some of them sneak up at lunchtime and play. In fact, one story about Rohan there. We went to wake them up at the state tournament at, what was it, about six, seven in the morning and they had been practicing since five in the morning. So they had already been up practicing half of the night so that they were ready for that state tournament. In fact, that was the second day. But again, the effort that these students put in and we can do, we only can thank you for the time and the support and what you've given us to make this team a such a success. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jones.
Would it be possible just to ask them to introduce themselves really quickly?
We want to ask the students and coaches and Mr. Jones to find a way to take a nice photo in front of the folks. Bring your trophies.
Traveling ones. Got two.
Those are all this year's trophies.
Reverend Walker, can I just second the fact that I don't think Mr. Jones should be able to retire? I don't, did you have Mr. Jones at Essex as well? You did? Okay. I just, as a parent and having him have influence on the young men that are in my life, he's done a long-term job. So you guys are truly blessed to have him as a principal and we are lucky to have him at Jennings. I'm really glad he's there.
Jones has been around a little while. He even started back at Firestone. I'm gonna go back a little bit more. He was teaching and he coached tennis back during that time, so he's been involved for a long time with kids and putting that extra time in. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I already whispered in his ear that we were very concerned about the notice that he was thinking about retirement, but now... But now, we have a lot of evidence to keep him employed at Akron Public Schools. So, thank you very much and congratulations to our wonderful chess team, both middle and high school. Yes. At this time, we have our approval of our meeting minutes for April the 29th.
Second.
Been moved properly seconded and questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
At this time then, Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 21 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved. Been properly moved?
Second.
And seconded? Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration two motions and two resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 25 business affairs recommendations and one item on the business affairs supplement. And I really hate to do this, but I'm gonna put Suzie Graham on the spot just to talk about the information that's in the supplement. It's a plaza project with Downtown Akron Partnership at the STEM Middle School.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to hear this and for entertaining it on your agenda in such short order. So, we started to work with the students at the STEM School with a group of artists who are from Madrid, Spain called Boa Mestura. Boa Mestura is the name of the entire artist collective. We started to work with them last year. The plaza was identified by Gell Studio as an opportunity for us to strengthen our connection to the University of Akron and downtown. That location, because it's a little bit set back away from the road, it makes for a rather long, kind of a tedious walk. And so, a lot of the work Downtown Akron Partnership is working in public spaces to make improvements, to make it more vibrant, more active. And so, the plaza was identified as an ideal location. Boa Mestura was identified as an ideal group of artists to partner with us to help this project come to fruition. The plaza currently is used for dismissal of students during bus time. And there is some outdoor learning that is done on the plaza, but for the most part, there's not a whole lot of activity there. And while we wanted to bring something that was beautiful and colorful to the site and inspirational to the site, we didn't necessarily want to bring a whole lot of foot traffic up close to the school building itself. And so, we thought this installation would be ideal. The principles of the art itself combine the same principles that are alive in the school as far as science, technology, engineering, math. It will take a beautiful quote from a Rita Dove poem and sort of put it across the structures that are being proposed so that if you stand on one side of the plaza, you'll be able to read one side, one sentence of the phrase or one piece of phrase. And then, if you stand on the other side of the plaza, you'll be able to read the other piece of that phrase. And then, as you move, the words sort of splinter apart and break apart, create this sort of magical feeling as you're walking around the plaza itself. And we love the fact that the students, the learners at the STEM School selected between two different phrases from Rita Dove. And we do have the permission of Rita Dove to use her phrase in the artwork. Really excited about it. And we are super excited to get started, given your permission. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Comments? Want to thank you, really want to thank you for including Rita Dove's work. A native Akronite and a great poet, poetess.
And we're so excited, it's 10-year anniversary. Great time to celebrate. Thank you.
Yeah. And with that, Mr. President, these recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved. Been moved properly seconded? Any questions or comments? Hearing none? Roll call.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
As we continue to move on to our next items. Superintendent's report?
No reports tonight.
President's report, just simply to follow up on a couple of the activities that have taken place and to highlight, of course, our wonderful work at Early College. As was already stated, many of our students got their diploma, graduated on Sunday with their associate's degree. And to see such a wide range of diversity, just as we saw with our chess club today. These are the things that we want to see portrayed in the newsprint and on, in news articles, et cetera, the very wonderful diversity that we have and the wonderful academic aspect of our schools. Teacher of the Year. And then, the Healthy Babies Healthy Start that took place at Buc-Do. Not only did Mrs. Lee emphasize infant mortality, which we've talked about, that affects particularly two zip codes in Akron, but she talked about maternal mortality, that many of our women are dying in childbirth, particularly African-American women. And we know that comes about through stress, unfortunately, through racism and discrimination that has affected our young ladies to the extent that they have either low birth rate, not have proper care, moving towards bringing forth their child. And thus, many of them die either in childbirth or some incident that may occur. And this is an alarming number. It's going up. Cleveland has staggering numbers and Akron is not far behind. So, that affects our children, affects the lives of families. So, we would want to pay close attention to that. We want to thank the men of Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity for their luncheon where scholarships were given. Mr. Alexander talked about that. He's a proud member of that fraternity. And then, the Martin O'Chapman Breakfast took place over the weekend, which was sponsored by Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, where again, several of our students in Akron Public Schools received scholarships, of which I'm a member of that fraternity. Want to thank Lisa Mansfield, who is our trustee representative to OSBA for organizing, the members of the Northeast Region and staff of OSBA for taking a tour of the I-Prime School and then having conversation afterwards, getting updates on our finances, which we'll hear a little bit later from our treasurer and CFO. We partner with so many people to bless the Akron community. That's the richness of our community. So, we would hope that we would continue to emphasize that partnership and all the things that we do. Of course, we saw it with Dick's Sporting Goods, with the LeBron James Foundation and the I-Prime School and the new gym. But we have a whole array of partnerships through our college and career and other individual schools. So, we're grateful, highlight the partnership that was just spoken of now, the art that will be presented. So, we are blessed to have that partnership and we're blessed that Akron Public Schools plays a key part of that. I was in a conversation with the faith-based community, the mayor, the county executive, chief of police, chief of our fire department and various religious community persons of faith gathered to talk about, elevate Akron, to talk about other finances, talk about how to, to look at the new webpage that the county is moving forward with. And one of the key elements of all that conversation dealt around Akron Public Schools. If Akron Public Schools does not succeed in the things that we're doing, all of these other things that we want to do, elevate Akron, all of these other activities will not be successful. And they have been applauding the work of Akron Public Schools and college and career and other activities. This is through our police department, through our fire department, through the mayor's office, through the county executive and through our faith-based committee, community partners. So, Akron Public Schools has done a wonderful, is doing wonderful work. And so, we'd hope that we continue to speak about it and lift it up in all that we do. And I know our board does an excellent job of that. So, I thank you for doing that. That's my report for this evening. Superintendent's report?
As Reverend Walker mentioned, I wanted to give a brief update about where we're at with the state budget process. And especially that in relation to the Fair School Funding Plan sponsored by Representative Cup and Patterson. So, as you know, the governor released his budget on March 15th as required by law. And then, a couple of weeks ago, the House released their initial budget, which did not contain components of the Cup-Patterson Fair School Funding Plan. And then, last week, the House released the omnibus, which is the complete and detailed component of the House budget. What was included though, were components of the Cup-Patterson Fair School Funding Plan with a lot of the funding requests that we had for deep dive into the areas of gifted, economically disadvantaged, special education, transportation. And a lot of those requests were included. Meanwhile, Speaker Householder, Speaker of the House, has been publicly encouraging us to continue the work. We've also had the governor encouraged to continue the work. And right now, we're in the process where it's being turned over to the Senate and the Senate's developing their own budget. We anticipate within the next few weeks, they will release a budget. They've asked for testimony, which I will be giving next week, to the Finance Primary and Secondary Subcommittee of the Senate. And our hope is with the Cup-Patterson Fair School Funding Plan, that will either be included as a separate House bill, it would be included in the Senate budget process, or the Speaker of the House has publicly said, within this current General Assembly, which expires December of 2020, that he would like to see this adopted. And the feedback, I think we're gaining some positive momentum. We were under a bit of a time crunch to get it into the House budget proposal. So, stay tuned. But it's looking up and positive.
Thank you. Committee reports? Legal, Contract, Board Policy Committee? No, no report. Finance, Capital Management? Instructional Policy and Student Achievement?
No report.
No report.
Can I just stop for just a second though? And can we just talk about the fact, or just pause for a second, think about the fact that those kiddos were first and second in the state of Ohio? I mean, we're not talking regionally, we're not talking some county, we're not talking...
That's true.
We are talking the state of Ohio. I just, I just had to say that. All right, now I'll stop, Patrick.
Duly impressed.
Thank you for that observation. That's why we're so Akron proud of our students and why we stand up for public education. We see the benefits all around us. Any unfinished business? We have two items on unfinished business.
Want me to go first?
Yeah.
So, the board really received a supplement this afternoon on the Firestone CLC Naterium. And that letter, albeit was not as timely as we wanted, it was a complete assessment of the Firestone pool and naterium situation. It outlined the issues that were not known at the time of design. So, we're asking the board for an issue not to exceed change order in the amount of $110,000. I can hit those bullet points if you want them on the record. Otherwise, we'll submit the letter to the board minutes about those items.
Questions?
I'm sorry. Can I ask a question about timing? Will it, will with these changes and with these additional things, will it change the timeline for reopening the pool and...
It will. And I believe that we've already reached out to the university for pool rental. But this is also why we're bringing it and sending you the letter today so that we would be as efficient with our time as possible. We can keep it moving.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item? Okay, that will be under new business.
We'll need a motion.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Been moved?
Second.
Properly seconded? Any questions or additional questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Under new business.
So, of course, last week, we witnessed the announcement for the gym addition at the I-Prime School with a check of $1 million from the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation. Now, because our partner, the LeBron James Family Foundation, will be funding that, we're gonna have to, you know, do those things a little differently. In addition, the foundation has also talked about adding an outdoor basketball court to the site as well. And so, I need to have some flexibility in how we approach that. We also have to go through the city approval process, so there are checks and balances. So, I just need authority to issue notices to proceed at the appropriate time. You'll be brought in the loop when there are various things that have to be approved in terms of design, you know, before they go to the city for approval, just so everyone's on the same page. But there are certain aspects of the work that I will have to approve, working with staff, you know, such as site plans, locations, bring those items to you. But for some of that work, we do have to work with, you know, as, work with the board to try and be more flexible. So, I just want some authority to be able to issue those notices to get some of that preliminary work started, particularly on the outdoor basketball court that they'd like to have at the site. And then, when the time comes, the pre-work for the actual gym construction, I think at our next board meeting, I should be able to bring some preliminary plans or at least the concepts of what they want to do. And of course, as you know, with any of our construction projects, those will have various constraints first, so be the geotechnical work that they have to get done so we can make sure it's sited properly. And then, any provisions from the building department in terms of setbacks, et cetera, those are things that I'll need to keep you apprised of. But I'll also need some authority to be able to make those decisions without, you know, delaying that work.
Do we need a motion to give you that authority?
Yes, a general motion for that authority.
Okay. Is it been properly moved? Is there a second to give the superintendent that authority?
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded? Any questions or comments? Question?
Are we approving both the outdoor and, your permission to move forward on the outdoor and the indoor basketball slash gymnastics?
Yes, yes, exactly. Now, the, for the, for the basketball court, that's a much simpler project. For the gym, there is some design work that still has to be done. And, you know, those are, there are things that I'm not gonna say, oh yeah, we can go without you all seeing those items. And making sure that the city and the building, you know, the building department approves of them as well. So, there are lots of approvals that have to be done, particularly with the gym portion of the work.
So, what we're, yes.
So, you'll continue to give us updates?
Absolutely.
What's going on, even though some of the stuff we don't have to report on, but at least we'll know what's happening.
Absolutely. Remember, we own the property, so I have a, you know, I have an interest in making sure things are done right. And then, it's just because it's being paid for by a partner, there are certain things that, you know, I just need to keep moving and like to be able to do that. So, you know, some of the things may come to you, just like when they select a contractor to do certain aspects of the work. The contractor won't be working for us, but we'll still have some control over that because again, we're the owner.
Do you have a sense of timeline yet?
Not for the, not for the actual gym expansion. There's a lot of work, I think, that still has to be done with that. For the outdoor basketball court, there are some, you know... There are some, you know, um, options for having it on the east side of the building as opposed to the west side where the gym, the, the plan is to put the gym. Um, but there is a plan looking at, um, an outdoor basketball court, which would be adjacent to the current playground.
I, I do know that the LeBron James Family Foundation, uh, would like to, after we had that announcement about the gym and I was speaking with the architect and the other persons, parties, would want to aggressively move forward. And I think the superintendent wants to have the, the flexibility to move us forward. But at the same time, we have a responsibility, uh, to, uh, who we are as the board, to make sure things are done properly and in order. Uh, but to continue the process so that we move forward. But any major things that needs to be done, still has to come through the board.
Once constructed, will Akron Public Schools own that piece of...
That's right. That has to be a donation, just like when, you know, the Elit Wrestling Boosters built the training building at Elit. That gets donated to the district.
And we saw a, uh, what, a, a design. But of course, before anything, we'll look at that design because there were some things that obviously we needed to have in place. So before all that's done, we will get a chance to look at all of that.
Right, yeah. At the event, they unveiled what they thought was kind of a concept or elevation. That all has to be ferreted out with, you know, the architect and then of course, the building department, our own business affairs office, you know, making sure insurance is in place and that, you know, the safety issues are taken care of. Those are the things I need to be able to move on fairly quickly.
Questions or comments? Hearing none? Uh, roll call?
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, then we do need to recess into executive session. And per Pursuit into Ohio Revives Code 1212 dot 22, uh, G1, for the purpose of considering discipline of a public employee or official of the school district. G, uh, three, which deals with, and G4, to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment.
So moved.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded? Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher? Mrs. Mansfield?
Out on time.
And, all right. And just to highlight, G3 was to, for us to discuss disputes involving the board in our school district that are subject to pending or imminent court action. All right? We will pause for about five minutes or so and then reconvene.